I'm calling this meeting to order. This is the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, held on Tuesday, September 16th, commencing at 4:30 PM. Council members in attendance are Council President Kritzler, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Noe Vakamina, Councilmember Stewart, myself, Councilmember Salahudin. I will call other council members as they join. And there are five items on the agenda. The first item is seeking approval to partner with King County Regional Homelessness Authority to pool and administer severe weather shelter funding. We have planning and community development, Planning Director Carol Helen, and Human Services Manager Brooke Buckingham.
Thank you so much for that introduction, Presiding Officer Salahudin. I am going to turn the briefing over to Brooke Buckingham, who is going to provide information about our opportunity to partner with King County Regional Homelessness Authority.
I don't see the green light. Is it working? Okay, great. Good afternoon. Last year, council approved $25,000 per year to address service gaps for serving individuals experiencing homelessness during severe weather activations. Since then, we have been working closely with the City of Bellevue and King County Regional Homelessness Authority, KCRA, to establish a formal partnership that allows for these funds to be pooled and administered by KCRA. KCRA has been leading regional planning efforts during severe weather events, including heat, smoke, cold weather, and other adverse events, as we know, the windstorm last year. During these activations, they convene cities and nonprofit providers to respond to immediate needs and identify capacity challenges to local shelters. They are also responsible for a motion. The agreement, which is included in Attachment C, includes rules and responsibilities, scope and allowable costs, and reporting requirements. The governing board approved this agreement at a July meeting, and Bellevue City Council is scheduled to approve this later this month. This partnership would leverage the city's funds with other funding sources and create administrative efficiencies for agencies that are already receiving severe weather funding, such as Porchlight, Fund of Youth, and the Sophia Way. In your packet materials, there's information about the RFP process, as well as their response to severe weather in 2024. We are requesting that this item be placed on the October 7th consent agenda.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Noe Vakamina?
Thank you. I didn't know, from reading this, if this is something that we've done before, and what the precedence is as far as distribution goes, going across. So then, when we take a look at, and by no means do I mean that this is not, that we shouldn't be doing this, or this is not a regional issue. We know that it is, and it's absolutely Redmond should be doing our part. But then, what does it look like and how it impacts, specific to Redmond community? And I know that's difficult to gauge, because, you know, organizations that we do have a partnership with, such as Porchlight, Sophia Way, Eastside Services, but is there a way where we can break that down to what is the impact specific to Redmond?
Yes. So, as far as whether we've done this before with KCRA, no, we have not. We have done these types of partnerships with City of Kirkland through the pooled contracting process. So structurally, this would be very similar, where KCRA is the contract holder for these contracts, and then we essentially are allocating our funds to KCRA, which then is contracted through the providers. As far as the stipulations in the agreement and the conversations that we've been having is that these funds would serve East King County, so we're not, these funds would not be given to a shelter in the City of Seattle. We would also have a seat in the RFP process, so when they will be running an RFP process, they'll request for proposals for 2026, and we would have either City of Redmond or City of Bellevue staff participating in that and making sure that, yes, in fact, it's aligned with how we want to see these funds allocated. So the direct impact is that these agencies, so right now, we have contracts with all of these providers for just regular shelter funding. So this is a specific use for severe weather, and that allows KCRA to run all of the procurement processes, and if they, we don't have to run a separate process for severe weather. So there's an efficiency for us to rely on KCRA to administer that process and then contract directly with those agencies. And we were assured that there is not going to be a City of Seattle or South King County shelter receiving East King County dollars. Does that answer your question?
It's helpful. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions? Council President Kritzler?
It just went off. Oh, there we go. It wasn't red or green. Thank you very much. So I think this makes sense, especially given that Mayor Bernie also serves in a governing capacity on KCRA, at least that's my understanding. I think my only question would be if we do feel that KCRA has the capacity to be able to deliver across the region on providing these services better than we would be able to provide them within our own city. But it does make sense to be able to kind of pool resources and response. I know that every time we have a severe weather event, we hear in particular about those most impacted, which are those who are facing housing instability. So being able to kind of share resources across and think about how to respond would be great. I appreciate the previous question about making sure that we have the dollars we've allocated go to Eastside Cities as well.
Yeah. So is your question just about whether they have capacity to?
Yeah, if you feel confident in their capacity to deliver.
So, I mean, I think we've seen different articles on KCRA, and I would say that this last, I don't know if it's last year or the year prior, really the focus internally, operationally, to make sure that contracts are at the door. It's really the bread and butter of the organization, make sure that the providers are being paid on time, contracts are at the door. So we would not have pursued this partnership maybe two or three years ago, but we have a lot of confidence that these contracts are going to be signed in a timely way and be meeting frequently with them as an organization. So, yes.
I'd just like to add that I think this is a good test of the ability to consolidate contracting with KCRA for the severe shelter requirements, because it would be potentially an outcome in the future to essentially consolidate other shelter funding opportunities with KCRA. So this will be a good, small monetary amount to manage and to test the capacity and system efficiencies in the future, both for KCRA and for our shelter community, so that they only have to go to one source to also procure severe weather shelter services.
Thank you. Before we move forward, just want to flag that Councilmember Anderson has joined in person, and Councilmember Fields is online. Councilmember Noe Vakamina, did you have a question?
Thank you. My second question was about the amount, because relatively, it's a small amount. It's $50,000, $25,000 per year. And then, we, confirming that there are other funds that we have that are specific for severe weather, that's in addition to this, and that this isn't putting all of our funds for severe weather into one basket. Correct?
So the other funds are just for shelter capacity, just year-round shelter. So this is very specific when we have an activation. There is a three-tier activation. When they hit the highest tier in severe weather, or actually any tier, the providers will bill for any severe weather-related activity. But that's not just their, like, right now, tonight, we're paying for bed capacity at our shelters. So that's our, we'll maintain that.
Correct. So are there other additional funds besides the $25 per year, specific to?
From the city or?
Correct. That would not be necessarily going into this fund, but that we have in addition.
If it's the only severe weather funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Fields, online.
Thank you. So is there any extrapolation in this funding amount based on the number of days we think it will be needed? Is there any prediction about the number of extreme weather days that would impact or kick this in?
We don't know, but I think we can, what we do know is the last two or three years since KCRA has been overseeing this, they have fine-tuned the criteria of when they activate for life safety reasons. And so we have seen an increase, and we know that with climate change, we're going to see more of this. I would also say that our shelters are at capacity already, year-round. And so I think when we're talking about capacity in general terms, we have a shelter crisis year-round. So this is just going to really allow agencies to increase the number of beds that they can offer and be a lifesaving effort, but the system overall is maxed out. So that, I don't know that completely what you're answering, but I just want to highlight that that's a need that we are seeing across the board with our family shelter, and we need more shelter in all of King County.
So if I understand that answer, it's really, in effect, just additional money for a lot of need. And it's not necessarily tied to extreme weather. I mean, it has a purpose, but it's not tied, it doesn't activate based on extreme weather. You still have those needs, even if the weather is a balmy 70 degrees or something. Is that kind of?
So I can, I'll take a stab at that as well. Is this, the specific $25,000 per year was funded in the budget to address service gaps specifically tied to severe weather activations? And this was seen as, one, a pilot, again, to test KCRA's capabilities in addressing this issue. They've been actually relatively successful in that space of severe weather activations. The other things that Brooke mentioned was the efficiencies it creates for the city. We don't have 24-hour staff that have gone through shelter training for severe activations that are capable at the scale that we need to essentially open a shelter facility, for instance, at the city overnight, to address that need. By pooling these funds, we ensure that that need can be addressed when the demand spikes. So that's one of the efforts in providing this funding that you did as part of the budget, just for those severe weather activations.
I got it. Thank you. And it sounds like we could also pool, pool the actual facilities. In other words, it doesn't matter if you live in Redmond or Kirkland, if you can be taken to a facility that will save your life because of getting out of extreme weather, that sounds like that kind of pooling also is a potential, right?
Correct. On the, on the east, on the East King County shelters. Yes.
Thank you, Director.
Great. Any other questions? If there are none, we will see this on the October 7th business meeting agenda. Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have an item from FIRE, Agreements for Tablet Command Integration, Maintenance, and Shared Services. We have Deputy Chief Kurakoni introducing, oh, Battalion Chief Freeman will be introducing this item.
All right. Thank you and good afternoon, council members. I am here seeking approval for two agreements in the support of implementation of Tablet Command. With your approval, we hope to put both agreements on the consent agenda on October 7th. So the Fire Department is implementing Tablet Command, which is a digital command board that will significantly increase situational awareness and overall scene safety. It's an iOS-based application that will run on our existing Fleet hardware, so no additional hardware purchase involved. The application will be utilized regionally by Redmond Fire, Kirkland Fire, Eastside Fire and Rescue, as the first users in Northeast King County. And this is going to happen with the support of South King County Fire Training Consortium and NORCOM. As stated, there are two agreements that require approval from council to achieve this goal. First, an agreement with NORCOM for integration services outside of our normal contract, and this includes a one-time integration fee of $595, and then ongoing maintenance fees of $170 a year. Second agreement is a billing agreement with Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, who is the fiscal agency for South King County Fire Training Consortium. The consortium currently manages Tablet Command for 15 departments in South King County, and the three departments in Northeast King County will be operating under their enterprise agreement. This reduces costs significantly, both at integration and on an annual basis. Billing for 2025 will be $2,891, and that includes the one-time integration costs, and that expected annual cost will be approximately $2,100. And we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Questions from council? And I believe the ask was for this to be on the October 7th consent agenda. Great. Any questions? Yeah, Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks so much. I just want to clarify a couple things from the memo. So our memo lists that this, the second agreement is an interlocal agreement with the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority. You were speaking of the Training Consortium in South King County. Are these one and the same, or how are these two bodies interconnected?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Stewart. So yes, Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority is the fiscal agent for the Training Consortium. So when we consulted with the city attorney, the recommendation was that the billing agreement had to be with Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority as the holder of the funds.
Any other questions? Councilmember Noe Vakamina?
Thank you. I was pausing because I felt that sneeze coming, so I appreciate that. VC Freeman, welcome for, welcome and thanks for bringing this forward. Question, just on clarification on the amounts, because what was stated was one, what was listed seems to be another amount, very small amount, which is what kind of piqued my interest. And I figured that we were taking a look at this, because it is entering into an interlocal agreement, because the amount, where did it go, was, like, one of them was stated as $595, whereas the one stated was different. So just a quick clarification on that.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Noe Vakamina. So the agreement with NORCOM, the one-time integration cost is the $595. That's a shared cost with Kirkland Fire and Eastside Fire, as is the ongoing $170 a year of maintenance fees is split three ways across the three departments. The reason that there wasn't, in the memo, included a cost for the agreement with Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority for billing, is that we hadn't actually received a bill yet from them and didn't know what it was going to be. After the memo was distributed, we did receive a bill from them, and so we knew what our exact cost was going to be for the remainder of 2025. And then, the round cost for 2026 is because they haven't established 2026 pricing yet, so we're still waiting to hear what that will be. But it's not likely to be a significant increase from what we're paying for 2025.
Great. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will see this on October 7th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is also FIRE. We will have now Deputy Chief Kurakoni for the adoption of 2025 to 2050 Redmond Fire Department Functional Plan.
Good afternoon, council members. I am, with great pleasure, finally to introduce to you guys the 2025-2050 Fire Department Functional Plan. We're here for feedback tonight and what you'd like to know to better understand as we move forward on adoption of this plan. This plan is a long-range strategic document that outlines the fire department's facility conditions, service area needs, and capital investment priorities through 2050. It's being proposed as an amendment to the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan to ensure alignment with the Redmond 2050, the Growth Management Act, and the King County planning policies. Now, while the plan itself doesn't authorize construction, it does provide the policy framework for future decisions about capital projects. It also lays the groundwork for updating fire impact fees and helps us meet concurrency and adequacy requirements. We've already held a public hearing and gathered community input, and so today, we're asking for your direction, what questions you have, and what areas you'd like us to explore further. Your feedback will help us prepare for the upcoming study session with council, scheduled for October 14th. Looking forward to your insights and guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, and appreciate that flag that we will be seeing this on a study session on October 14th. So any questions, at least for now, and I'm sure that we could email any further questions? What would you say is the deadline for when you would want those questions in by?
Well, we need to be able to provide our packet to everybody, so I would say we need about a week. If you guys can get that to me in a week, that way I can get the packet and the PowerPoint presentation prepared.
Great. So any questions right now? Councilmember Stewart?
Sure. Thank you so much, Deputy Chief, and I appreciate the chance to take a peek at this. I also really appreciate the work of the Planning Commission and their careful attention already throughout the summer. They had more meetings, I believe, in the month of August than we did, so really appreciate all of them. Anyway, I guess in broad strokes, and I'll follow up by email, but some broad strokes, the Planning Commission flagged their continued careful, watchful eye on water supply questions. I think it's worth taking a little bit of time in our study session to understand what their questions were and how those were addressed. For me, the rest of this story is the buildings, the people, and the equipment, and the fourth piece of that being, of course, how we're going to pay for it. So when it comes to the buildings, the people, the equipment, I look forward to hearing the story and having that laid out for the public, who we will eventually ask to help fund it all. And when it comes to the funding, we have a lot of moving pieces in our current CIP, as you know, and a lot that is already pretty clear about the future of what these big moving parts are going to be. So I do hope, before the council is asked to approve the functional plan, after having had a chance to really understand the recommendations, not only that we're adopting a policy document that we believe lays out the best possible future for our city in terms of the fire service, but also that is actually achievable from a dollars and cents perspective. So I do hope that the council will get that time to study the CIP more closely and what the big commitments are that are headed toward it in the next two, three cycles out. Thanks.
Councilmember Fields?
So yeah, when I woke up this morning, checked the weather, I noticed that there was a double red flag for Redmond. One was heat, the other was wind, and specifically in the narrative, they talked about the potential for wildfires. Will you be addressing some of the changes, some of the updates, some of the potential technology and equipment changes that we need in Redmond to protect against that potential?
That's a great question, Councilmember Fields. So for clarity, the functional plan does address capital needs, particularly around facilities and large pieces of equipment. The standards of cover and community risk assessment, which is something that was done in 2022, is where we kind of talk about the operational elements of the Fire Department. What we have done in the functional plan, however, is we've given ourselves some space within future budgets allocated to the, we don't know what we need, but we're pretty sure we're going to need something that's going to address impacts of climate change, any other technologies that we may, or hazards we may not be aware of that could come up as we begin to live within our newer urban environment, sound transits in our community for a few years, and maybe we identify other things. So we know that there are things on the horizon, but we also still have some hazard and risk assessments forthcoming, and they may identify some specific needs, but this functional plan won't be able to capture things that we don't really know how to answer quite yet.
Great. Thank you. So basically, we're peeking around the corner as best we can, with the idea that when that corner starts to turn, we'll have more information.
Absolutely. Yeah, you're correct. And like I said, you'll see some line items in future budgets of, you know, $1 million for stuff, and use a better word than that, in the functional plan. But that's generally what that's to capture, is to make sure that we are putting and earmarking dollars in the future for things like that.
Yeah, I'm good with those words right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. A million dollars for stuff sounds lovely.
Yep.
We've talked a lot about the Regional Fire Authority conversation, and I'm interested to hear in our study session how this would potentially dovetail with that, what that conversation looks like. I know this work was happening, and that work is future work, but just the nexus of how these things could potentially work together, and just, just an update on, on all of those issues, and, because that Fire Authority conversation hasn't necessarily gone away, but it hasn't necessarily been an update. So just kind of want to hear more about how things tie together.
Okay.
And I would just throw in my plus one. That was going to be my question as well.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? Again, we have one week to get you any other questions.
Any other questions? And I know it's a, it's a light read, right? 100 and some pages, so, yeah.
Perfect. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I'll add one more, which is a topic that the Deputy Chief and I were discussing earlier this afternoon, but there's been a lot of interest in the community in terms of the department's role in emergency preparedness and response, and of course, our residents' eager role to be a part of all of that. So if you could touch on that in your presentation, I think it'd be much appreciated by the public.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Council President Kritzler?
I will send in most of my comments to you via email, but I will just plus one on the conversation around capital. I think, from what I understand, in terms of some of the age of our buildings and where we're at for our Fire Department, that I think that this is a big, future-looking discussion for us, and how we kind of envision that. And I saw the Planning Commission spent some time kind of thinking about that and some of the future for some of our buildings. So I think that'll be a good part of the conversation.
Yep. Okay.
Great. Well, thank you so much. I don't see any other questions, so we will wrap up this item, but see you on October 14th.
Thank you.
Next item is also Deputy Chief Kurakoni with a quarterly overtime report, January 1st of this year through June 30th of 2025. This is informational only, but excited to hear.
Yeah, sounds good. Chief Whitney, do you want to join me, or do you want to stay there?
And we will be joined by Deputy Chief Whitney.
And Daniel, do you want to sit up here? Only to take credit for preparing the report. All right. So it's me again. Thank you. We're, Chief, Deputy Chief Whitney and myself are here to provide an overview of the Fire Department's overtime report, sorry, for the second quarter. Overall, as you guys can see in the materials in your packet, our combined spending on regular and overtime salaries is tracking slightly under budget at 23.7% compared to where we should be, which is about 25% of the budget at this point in the year. However, overtime is alone trending higher currently at about 36, almost 37% of the budget, which is about 3.1 million. That is about $1 million at this point over target. The good news, however, is that because of vacancies that we have in the department, we're actually getting an offset from salary savings, which is about $1.87 million. The key drivers behind our overtime, and we've discussed probably in several of the other meetings, is first, we have our fire recruits still didn't graduate from the academy until the second quarter, and so they're not available for line duty. So the vacancies that they're intended to fill still have to be backfilled with existing staff to cover those shifts. Second, this summer, we've seen an uptick in mandatory overtime due to family, medical, and modified duty leaves that can occur because of injury. And while even our modified duty employees are able to provide productivity at some other places within the department, their absence from the line actually still increases our need to backfill their position, to be able to support the crews. And then, third, earlier this year, again, we had some deployments to the California wildfires, and so we're waiting for, again, the $110,000 in reimbursable expenses that we'll get for that, and that's the incident-driven overtime. So it's worth noting, as you'll see in the report as well, that overtime related to our ALS program is funded through that King County levy, and that totals about 1.1 million. And again, that's a fully reimbursable cost of overtime. So while overtime is above its target, we're responsibly managing it and offset it with the savings from the salaries, and how much of it is tied to temporary reimbursable circumstances. So there's some of it that's coming back. However, again, due to the vacancies that we currently have in our department, we're not able to completely eliminate the impact from the OT that's related to that. And so at this point forward, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Noe Vakamina?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the update, and that's great news on the monetary impact. My question is, everything comes at a cost, and then how is that impacting our department? Because they're on mandatory OT. Because they're on mandatory OT.
Yeah, it's a great question. This is an issue that we're grappling with now. It's new to us. In the past, there was a desire, to some degree, by labor force over, say, five to seven years ago, for overtime. It wasn't, there was not a negative impact associated with it. It was appreciated by the workforce. That has changed significantly in the last five years, in that we have a workforce that values time over money, which is a good thing, especially for mental health and some of the other things we're seeing go on. But it's a shift that's happened very quickly for us, and in all honesty, we're in a position where we're struggling to have enough FTEs to maintain a workforce that doesn't have to work mandatory overtime. If you were to go out and interview any of the workforce today, probably the first thing that you would hear as a concern out of them is the mandatory overtime. And that's true with both suppression side as well as the ALS side of the House. So it is a challenge, and it is, it's a change in what we've seen in the workforce in the past, and maybe it's related to COVID, maybe it's not. I think it's just a recognition of a younger workforce that we've hired that has different values today. But it is probably one of our biggest concerns, honestly, how it affects morale.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks so much. You mentioned that we did have some new grads come out of the academy. I'd heard, anyway, would you like to summarize the amount of relief that actually came from the new grad crews in addressing these vacancies and what we can expect to see in Q3?
Another really good question, and it's top of mind for us right now, is that we do one new recruit academy annually for the suppression side. And traditionally, in the past, we've done one academy for the ALS side of the House, too, the paramedics. Those academies are limited in the number of recruits that we can put into them because we're sharing space with Bellevue Fire, and we can only have so many personnel in those academies at a time. We are, the crews that we came out definitely provided some level of relief, but we had attrition in the academy that was greater than we've seen in years past, too. So we didn't see the number of candidates come out of the academy that we put in. So immediately in June, when those candidates came out, the relief is valuable to us, there's no doubt, but we are still down probably nine FTEs at the end of that academy. We have, we are preparing to send the next group into the academy beginning in December. We have 16 FTEs. The city's been great at working with us to kind of, to work on a, to borrow FTEs from another department within the city so we could increase our numbers a little bit based on forecasting that we're seeing, that we can predict as attrition that will occur between now and the time that that academy is over. With that said, we are seeing retirements happen very fast. We are, and it's happening on both sides, suppression and ALS. ALS affects suppression in a significant way, because when we see retirements on the ALS side of the House, we pull from the suppression side to put them into medic school and send them to school for years, which means we reduce our numbers on the suppression side also. There's been lots of conversations around the city, and this is something you'll hear more about in the future, is the concept of flex PCNs, or what I call parallel hires. So we can do predictive analysis and see, have a good idea of when people are going to retire, and we can tie an FTE that will essentially go away once that individual retires. So what that does for us is it allows us to put people in the academy and train them while somebody is coming into the, at the end of their career. So when they do retire, we actually have a body that can fall into that and take over that work. Saves us significantly on overtime, but it also goes back to the morale of the workforce in protecting that morale, not forcing overtime issues with the group. And again, that works on both sides, the ALS side of the House as well as the suppression side of the House.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Thanks. So I think I've asked this question of Chief Shepherd during the budget process, and I understand all of the things that you described. I understand all of the things that you're dealing with. I'm not ignoring those. Question is sort of a technical question. When do you expect, on a calendar answer, that you will have stabilization and that we won't be relying on mandatory overtime or any high levels of overtime? When? I get all of the things, I understand what you're facing, but do you have a projection of a timeframe?
Yeah, I'll try to do my best to give you an answer for that one. We noticed that one of the biggest drivers of our overtime exceeding the budget that we have right now is due to being behind on filling vacancies. That's a trend. I looked back for several years and noticed that there is a, there started a widening gap actually prior to COVID on where we were seeing, again, this attrition, this separation, due largely to the Gen X staff members entering into their phase of retirement, which is going to continue for another few years. And so being able to say we're stable is only going to be at the point at which we actually are able to fully fill every vacancy that we have. And then the normal overtime that's based on, you know, vacation leave, sick leave, and all that other stuff becomes back to status quo. But that gap actually started growing again prior to COVID, and we just really have never, and COVID didn't help in itself with the high numbers. But then seeing that when we try to overhire by just a few positions, but then you lose more people, you're constantly in a state of never having the staff that you need on a consistent basis. So, Councilmember, it's kind of difficult to say the when. The when will be when we're able to kind of solve that particular challenge, and we're not quite sure when we'll be able to actually solve that quite yet.
Thank you.
I'll speak to it just briefly, too. I think that it's important to recognize that there's several things in play, and there's two separate segments to this. So first, I'm going to talk about the ALS side of the House, which doesn't impact suppression. 22 years ago, when the ALS program was brought over to Redmond, that was the beginning of retirements for that work group. They had had long careers, but they didn't have retirements that were embedded into their career prior to coming to Redmond. We're seeing the effects associated with that today because at 22 years, 23 years, they're now at a place where they have a pension that's valuable to them, and they're retiring out at a faster rate than we've ever seen before. That's one element, and so that's affecting the ALS side and how many students we have to put through school. We've done a lot of things to address that, including lateral hires with King County. We've started an accelerated lateral program for King County Medic One, which I can go into depth at a different time with you, but looks completely different than anything we've done in the 50 years of Medic One. Also associated with that, on the suppression side specifically, there was significant growth in the fire department 30 years ago, in the fire service, not just Redmond, and that growth is impacting the entire fire service because those are retirements that are happening now. And that was expansion of what is the fire service with EMS inclusions and those kinds of things. So that's impacted us because we've had a significant number of retirements. Chief Kurokony did a great job a year ago in laying out our workforce and really specifically looking at what is the age of the workforce? How much time do they have in the pension system, and what can we expect to evaluate when retirements would occur? And that's been really good for us, to forecast forward, to kind of have an idea of what the impacts are going to be. I can tell you right now, we intend to send 16 firefighters, or 16 new candidates to the academy beginning in December, which is great for us, 16 new people coming out in theory in June of next year. But we can already forecast today that we need, as of today, we know that we need 13 more in the following academy to come through, and that doesn't include any attrition that happens between now and then. So that number will likely be higher than 20 by the time we get to an academy that begins in December of 2026. The next layer to this all is, how do we have, do we have enough capacity within the academy that we run with Bellevue? And we don't know the answer to that, to Councilmember Fields' points. We're not sure how much capacity we have in the academies to send people through. So that's another piece of this that's a challenge for us. You've heard us talk about lateral hires, not only on Medic One side, but also on the fire side, and that is, that's the purpose for that, is to try and pick up people during the fall season of, or I'm sorry, the spring season of the cycle, to bring people in when they're available. But that's a limited pool of people that are looking to move from one agency to another agency as a lateral. So again, another area that we've been working on to try and bring those numbers in quicker where we can.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks. I'll just maybe flag this for a later conversation. I do remember when we, in fact, decided to move the overtime question from the FAC committee and into this committee so we could spend this time with you. You let us know, Deputy Chief, that likely we would be looking at overhires as a solution. I don't remember us ever being informed that that was the actual case that was moving forward. So unless I'm mistaken, I believe we've learned some new information here about the plan for the next academy, to do the overhires for the academy, and then follow it up with another 13, that's important to know, too. But I, I'm just kind of flagging that for the council. We actually, tonight, are going to allocate some dollars, hopefully to the community that are in fact dollars that are in the general fund because of some expected funding that was not going to be expended due to lagging new hires and things like that. So anyway, I just think as a council, we might have some questions on the financial side of all of this. I don't know if you know which positions or which departments the additional, would have been like seven positions were borrowed from for your next academy, but for instance, that's a question that I do have for myself, and I can follow up with you.
Yeah, happy to do that, because we worked with the finance department and the executive department on all that. And so while there is a formal plan that's actually been presented, the, what's advantageous is that the model that we did for fire actually shows benefits to other departments.
Great.
So once they started to see it, they're like, well, is there a way that this can be incorporated? So they're taking their time, so it's not, so it actually has broader value through the rest of the city. To address our needs right now, we're relying on a tactic that the fire department has had to use before, which is we do know people are retiring, like they've given us a notification, even if it's a soft notification.
Yeah.
So we're, it's not a gamble to say, well, we're just going to be loaned a position for like six months, and then as soon as the retirement happens, as we predicted, we give that piece back. So I think an overhire to us is only because the FTE wasn't living in our authorization, but it isn't an overhire to the city. It's still within the city's staffing authorizations.
I appreciate that, and I think it's our job to also make sure that we see the documentation on that. So thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, thanks. Just a follow-up. So in the previous agenda item, we talked about the plan, and specifically, Councilmember Stewart brought up something that I have tried to track at the city of Redmond for a lot of years, and that's improving our emergency response capacity and capabilities. And I heard you address that, and that we're going to talk about that more on October 14th. I guess the question I have today is, is this staffing issue a risk or a threat to being successful in improving our emergency response capabilities? Or is it, I mean, I would think that it is, but I guess the question is, is it a significant threat?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I would consider it a threat that's out there. And again, it goes back to morale, right? With morale, issues around morale associated with employment becomes a retention problem. And everything that we're doing right now is just dealing with, the vast majority is dealing with attrition that's happening through retirements. But we have seen some people leave, especially on the ALS side, that have chosen to go to other places because of the mandatory overtime burden. So that's the threat, is if we can, if we are at a place where it's affecting morale and affecting the work-life balance, people may look to go somewhere else and/or in their career at an earlier date. So, which puts us in a deeper position to continue to provide the services that we need to provide.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else? Perfect. Really appreciate it. We have one more item on the agenda, which was read-only, fire prevention performance data, Q1 and Q2 of 2025. If there are any burning questions, feel free to throw them out, but if not, we can respond via email. Yeah, Councilmember Stewart?
I actually have a good of the order before we adjourn, if you'll allow.
Yes, I know that there are multiple. So are there any other good of the orders? I know, I'll start with you, Councilmember Stewart.
Oh, wonderful. Sorry to get in the way. I wasn't aware. I just wanted to remind the public that gun violence is preventable, and here in the city of Redmond, we have invested in a gun buyback program. Our next event is this Saturday. You can learn more information on our website, and I appreciate the partnership of Redmond Police in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart, and thank you for continuing to flag that event as we've been, we've had it previously, and now this will be the second iteration. So looking forward to Saturday. Councilmember, Council President Kritzer?
Thank you. Yeah, since we are doing good of the order, I will note that council leadership is going to be putting in a request at the chair for our next meeting to be able to have an update on our various police technologies. I think many of us have gotten some questions as some of these technologies have started to be implemented in our city, and want to just make sure that we have a chance to be able to talk with our police chief, also especially as some of these technologies and those companies have been in the news. So if the chair is amendable, we'd love to see that on the next agenda.
Very amendable. Can definitely connect with the team, and we'll work to get that added to the next agenda.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Great. Seeing none, we are adjourned.